Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Mr. Hutton, if you could lead us in prayer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Almighty God, we give thanks and great blessings which have been bestowed on our citizens, including in the history of our community, in the peace of our enjoying, for our eyes to our deliberations as a candidate of our service, and the strength of our service and our practice of our duties and principles, for our next wisdom, all of us to understand, to deliver the blessings of this country, for the better for all, to make good laws and righteous decisions, for common men.
Present.
Councilor Robinson.
Present.
Councilor Stack.
Present.
Councilor Sweet.
Here.
Councilor Visnaskevor.
Here.
Thank you, our many disclosures of keen interest. Seeing none, thank you. Adoption for minutes, February 26, 2015, which were on the website. Councilor Visnaskevor, second by Councilor Gibson, discussion. All those in favor? Closed. None is carried, thank you. Members of county council, during the month of March, I attended 15 meetings on county business. On February 26, I participated in the river cutting of an email for the Robbie Deeds Crisis Centre located at Trinity St Andrews United Church in Renfrew. On March 1, I participated in the Care For Maple Syrup Sugar Bush Brunch and Competition as a judge held at Jermaine Hall at Canberra. On March 3, I attended a funding announcement with regards to the matching funds for the KMP. On March 3 and 24, I attended the taping of the Up To Date segment with Coach Co. This month's topics include the NPAC, the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, the Family Day Dump Tank fundraiser, and experiences I've had in my role as Warden. Please be seated. On March 3, I made a presentation to the council of the township from Metallosa Valley Mr. Hutton, if you take a little call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Councilor Dunn, Pastor, President. Councilor Dunn, you, President. Warden Eamon.
regarding the Canadian Nuclear Laboratories GOCO initiative.
Present.
Councilor Farr.
Present.
Councilor Gibson.
On March 9, I participated in a check presentation with the Government of Canada, partnered with
Present.
Councilor Gruntz.
Present.
Councilor King Mary.
Present.
Councilor Love.
the National Trails Coalition, offered $10 million in assistance to the expansion and
Present.
Councilor McCain.
Present.
Councilor Miller.
Present.
rehabilitation of Canada's snowmobile ATV and nomadized trail systems.
Councilor Murphy.
Present.
Councilor Beckett.
Present.
County Renfrew applied for and granted $20,000 for funding for the KMP trail for maintenance, such as signage, tree removal, deck bridging, or sorry, bridge decking, greening and rattle. On March 10, I attended the Enterprise of Renfrew County Audio Forum held at the Best Western Conference Centre. On March 27, I will be attending the relay for a late breakfast in Renfrew. On behalf of all members of county council, I extend condolences to Councilor Gary Gruntz. On behalf of the township of Bruton, Melvin, Dr. Franklin, and his family on the passing of his father, Mr. Leslie Gruntz, we also extend our condolences to Mrs. Rose Gruntz and her husband, Neil. This concludes my address for the session of county council. And now we'll have delegations, a staff presentation to Bernadette McCann House, Mrs. Gwen Ruttman. And Michael Barker will be...
Earlier in the month, as you're all aware, we quite often do denim days to raise funds for local charities and not-for-profits in the area. So we're very pleased to have you here today. And to present you a check, the staff is here to present you a check on behalf of their fundraising effort of a one-day denim day. So I'm going to let them go ahead and do that. And Michael, if you'll do the honors, we'll put it this way. There we are. So the amount of $425 to the Bernadette McCann House for women, so.
Thank you kindly.
You're very welcome.
Yes, thanks, Rose. Is everyone in here? Right here?
You're welcome to say a couple of words if you'd like as well.
This money clearly enhances the kinds of supports that we are able to provide to our clients and their families. Normally donations of this size go to what we call an emergency fund. So that's exactly where this money will be going. Thank you kindly, once again.
Thank you. On behalf of council, I'd like to express our appreciation to staff for their ongoing support of the community. This is a very deserving initiative. Bernadette McCann House has been a strong member in our community, serving a vulnerable population for well over 40 years, I believe closer to 50 years, and is quite a valuable asset to all of us who are in need. And so thank you to the staff for recognizing that and supporting their work. And now I'd like to call on Mr. Dave Henderson, the Funding Coordinator for the Canadian Cancer Society, Renfrew County Community Office, to introduce the DAFL. Mr. Henderson.
Warden and members of county council, I'd like to introduce you to one of our DAFL volunteers for DAFL Month, the month of April, Jean Mays.
I traveled to Toronto last Thursday, down and back the same day, to see my 81-year-old sister who has terminal cancer. I traveled with my four-kid brothers, some are all of them, and some of all of you may know them, the Ryan Brothers, Gary, Darrell, Kevin, and Edward. My sister Betty was diagnosed with terminal cancer two years ago, a bit more last October, in October 2013, cancer outside the kidneys and bladder. Last October, she was hospitalized and had scraping of the kidneys, but because the cancer had advanced and invaded the bladder, it wasn't scraped. From the hospital to a nursing home, and from the nursing home to the Palliative Care Centre. Five weeks ago, she was diagnosed, she was, yes, given two or three days to live, and here she is, still with us with a good visit. As we were leaving, I heard Brother Kevin say, "See you again in a couple of weeks." And since Betty's birthday is on the 15th of April, I know we'll be there again. Having survived the trip with the four-kid brothers, I know all I need to know about hockey and antique vehicles. We left at 7:30 in the morning, and I arrived home before 7 o'clock, which meant that the brothers got to the Junior Lumber Kings game at 7:30. I had colon cancer surgery in October 2013. My body crashed on the operating table. I have poliomyelitis, my algea rheumatica, and the prednisone had invaded my endocrine glands, causing my kidneys and bowels to shut down. And as Dr. Alfatari said, on the third day after surgery, I was high on morphine before that, "We thought we had lost you," a wonderful gentleman. Last week, after my three-year checkup with the colonoscopy, I was assessed as normal. And as I said about Dr. Alfatari, a wonderful, gentle, caring man, and here I am, volunteering for the Canadian Cancer Society in Renfrew County. The DAFL is one of the first signs of spring and a symbol of hope in the fight against cancer. Every year, hundreds of Renfrew County residents volunteer their time with the Canadian Cancer Society to sell DAFL pins for a donation of any amount. When we wear a DAFL pin, we are telling those who have cancer they are not alone, and we are making a statement that we are supporting the fight against cancer. The dollars raised by DAFL pins go to local programs like our volunteer transportation service, life-saving cancer research, information services, and efforts to prevent cancer. Thank you for helping the Canadian Cancer Society move closer to its vision, a world for no Canadian fears cancer.
Don't forget your box, girl.
Woman?
Woman? Oh, I'm a boy.
That's okay.
Jean represents an army of hundreds of volunteers who will be spreading out across Renfrew County during April, and we ask that you please purchase a DAFL pin and give generously when your residential canvasser comes to call. Our presentation took about three minutes. In that time, another Canadian has been diagnosed with cancer. On a 24-hour clock, every three minutes, another Canadian is diagnosed with cancer, which is why we are coming to you today and will continue to come to you. And I see a lot of our wonderful, bright DAFL pins around the room, but there is one person in these August chambers who doesn't seem to have been pinned yet, so we'll ask Warden Eamon if he please come forward and get himself a DAFL pin for April DAFL Month.
Hang on. Jean, Jean, just wait for the media. Just, there we go. And just wait for a minute. Put your hand back up there. There we go. For now, just look at the cameras. Just look at the cameras. There we go.
We'll keep doing a pose for him. Just pose and pretend you're doing it. Okay, all right, you look over here, too. Good. One more.
It certainly brings home the message to us, the importance of your campaign and your efforts as you educate us, as well as your response. So thank you very much for that, and good health to you in the future. Thank you. And now we'll move to Mr. Voss, who was going to do a presentation on the tax policies, going to overview it for us.
It's my privilege to come to you this morning and to speak about tax policy and the decisions that are required by this council on an annual basis. Just to set the stage really for my time with you this morning, I would let you know that your treasurer sat in these council chambers just last week, and we reviewed and discussed a very similar presentation. Next steps in this, following today, a report will be coming forward to the Finance and Administration Committee of County Council in the month of April, and that report will contain recommendations from your treasurers. We call ourselves the Tax Policy Working Group, but essentially your treasurers from each municipality. And it's those recommendations then that will be brought forward to finance and admin, and then if successful, we would like to adopt tax-related bylaws at the end of the month of April. So today we have a number of things that I'd like to review with you. You should have a slide deck, or I guess Rose will be distributing for you a slide deck of this presentation. So we'll talk a little bit about some of the assumptions behind the data, some acronyms that we'll use today. I'll try and not use them too, too much, but OPTA stands for the Online Property Tax Analysis System, a web-based system which contains all of the assessment data that comes from NPAC and other acronyms, so the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. We'll review education tax rates. We'll talk a little bit about CVA, another acronym for Current Value Assessment. We'll have a look at CVA as far as growth goes and reassessment. We'll talk about the nine decisions that are required by county council on an annual basis with respect to tax policy, and then have a really brief review of how we calculate municipal tax rates, which is probably very familiar to you, and then talk a little bit about annual tax rates and whether or not they're a very good indicator of what's going on in each municipality from a fiscal performance point of view. So just to get some of the assumptions out of the way, our data that we use to do this analysis comes from the Online Property Tax Analysis System. That data is released by NPAC, and it's contained within the OPTA system, and so we're relying on that data to do this analysis. And OPTA reminds us that until we get to the point of actually finalizing tax rates and freezing the data, that this should all really be treated as estimates only. Further to that, they let us know that until we get to that point in time, that they are constantly reviewing the data, looking at magnitude and exception reports, and ensuring that we don't have any outlier properties that are skewing the data one way or the other. And finally, just to note that we have already made the decision in Renfrew County to analyze the data that you're looking at as of returned roll date. So we have a number of options that are there for us. Essentially, as an upper-tier municipality, these decisions are the responsibility of the county, but in conjunction with your treasurers, we've chosen to analyze this data as of returned roll date. So it's a fixed date in time, it's a frozen date, so the rolls returned that you use in your municipalities to calculate taxes is the data set that we're using for this analysis. So for a number of you in this room, this is the very first time that you've looked at tax policy and the decisions that are required for you, and so I've attempted to kind of put this presentation together in a manner that hopefully gets us through this rather challenging and difficult piece of legislation in a clearer manner, hopefully a concise manner. And one of the things that we need to start off in the beginning is just a basic understanding that the property tax bill is made up of three components, at least in Renfrew County. There is the upper-tier municipal tax, the county rates, the lower-tier tax, as well there is an education tax. And on March 17, the new education tax rates were released by the province and loaded into the OPTA system for us to finish our analysis. That was two days before I met with your treasurers, so it was very much hot off the press. Education tax rates in Ontario for these classes have decreased by 3.94%, and essentially that decrease was somewhat predicted because of the ongoing change in reassessment. And CVA across Ontario has been reassessed and phased in, and so we expected there to be some change in the education tax rates, and in fact, there was. So education rates for 2014 will go out at $195 per 100,000 of CVA assessment, and last year it was $203. Business education tax rates are specific to each municipality, and you'll see that we have drops in commercial, industrial, large industrial, and pipeline, not at that same percentage, they're varying. It's important to note, though, that tax rates for education purposes are set by the province. So none of the decisions that we make around tax policy have any impact on education rates whatsoever, they are set by the province of Ontario. For new construction, there is a faster jump toward what they call a target education tax rate for business purposes. So although they are reducing the tax rates toward that target education rate for existing properties, if you're a brand-new business property in Ontario, you will jump automatically to this new and lower tax rate. The BET for 2015 is 1.19%, that's the target. So in 2014, we were coming down from 1.22 in commercial, industrial, and large industrial again for brand-new properties, and that's moving down to 1.19%. So essentially, that's it for education taxes as far as we're concerned at the municipal level, set by the province, but we are required to include those on the property tax bill throughout Renfrew County. So part number two is the upper-tier municipal tax, and what we're attempting to do, the reason why it's important is, of course, we have to come up with some concept of a municipal tax rate. And although your local treasurers might want you to believe that this is a very complex and intricate calculation, not really, that's the calculation in front of you. It's essentially your municipal levy dollars, and it's divided by total weighted and discounted current value assessment. That's the data that's coming to us through NPAC, Municipal Property Tax System. I do have a little caveat, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes, but for Renfrew County, we have a somewhat complicated calculation because we are levy-restricted with our industrial properties, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. But if that wasn't the case, and for most municipalities in the province of Ontario, that's as complicated as the tax rate decision is. So we need to talk about that item in red, total weighted and then discounted CVA, and that piece of the equation is really what we're here about this morning. Current value assessment comes from NPAC, that's the return roll. It's your Christmas present every year for your treasurers, and that's just the starting database for the calculation. It's really made up of two components, so weighted CVA every year changes by either CVA growth or CVA reassessment, and we'll look at each of those components. The CVA from NPAC must be weighted and discounted before we use it for property tax calculations, and that's the piece that you have some influence on as a municipal council. So total weighted CVA, as I mentioned, has two components. One is reassessment, and similar to market value, current value is an amount assigned to real property by an assessor from NPAC for property tax-based taxation purposes. Growth comes from new construction, additions, improvements, and changes in use. That's actually something physical. So if you've got a new residential subdivision in your municipality, and you've got new buildings that weren't there last year, that's CVA growth, and that's the thing that we'll talk about first of all. Growth represents assessment increase or decrease regardless of market value or real estate market conditions. All municipalities will see a revenue impact because of growth each and every year. Increases in CVA because of growth come specifically from new construction, additions, improvements, or changes in use, but likewise, decreases in CVA growth come from demolitions, change in use, and things like tax write-offs. So assessment growth always impacts municipal revenue. As municipalities, you have two sources of additional municipal levy dollars. One is from the budget decisions that you make around your council tables every year, but secondly, and independent of that, is CVA growth, and that's brand-new revenue that you didn't have last year that you can use for municipal purposes. So graphically, this is really just kind of how it works. On January 1 of 2014, we had a returned roll that we used for tax calculations in the 2014 year. But throughout 2014, a lot of things happened in your municipalities. You had supplementary assessments for additional new properties being added to the roll. You had omits being added to the roll. You had the AR Assessment Review Board decisions. You had Section 357 of the municipal act, which are tax write-offs. All of those things happened to your municipalities throughout 2014. So at December 31, we have a secondary roll. It's called a year-end roll, and it includes... or changes in use, but likewise, decreases in CVA growth come from demolitions, change in use, and things like tax write-offs. So, assessment growth always impacts municipal revenue. As municipalities, you have two sources of additional municipal levy dollars. One is from the budget decisions that you make around your council tables every year, but secondly, and independent of that, is CVA growth. And that's brand-new revenue that you didn't have last year that you can use for municipal purposes. So, graphically, this is really just kind of how it works. On January the 1st of 2014, we had a returned roll that we used for tax calculations in the 2014 year. But throughout 2014, a lot of things happened in your municipalities. You had supplementary assessments for additional new properties being added to the roll. You had omits being added to the roll. You had the AR Assessment Review Board decisions. You had Section 357 of the municipal act, which are tax write-offs. All of those things happened to your municipalities throughout 2014. So, at December the 31st, we have a secondary roll. It's called a year-end roll, and it includes all of those physical changes to properties that took place throughout the year. And that difference between January 1 of 2014 and December 31st is CVA growth in your municipality. So, what did it look like countywide? And I apologize, the numbers are pretty small. If you have them on your laptop, you can probably zoom in a little bit, or they're on the slide deck as well. But those are all of our tax categories. And at the bottom line, you'll see that CVA growth in 2014 countywide was 1.61%. You may recall at budget time, we talked a little bit about CVA growth and our expectation of what that could be, and we use last year's actual CVA growth when we talk to you about budget in January. And we use last year's 1.48% as being our expected CVA growth. And you'll see that the return roll that we received based on growth was 1.61. So, we beat our target by a little bit. It's very predictable and very stable. Eleven years, 1.57%. And so, you know, moving forward into the future, and I know I've spoken to council about long-term financial plans, so anywhere around the 1.5% mark in CVA growth is a pretty reasonable and realistic number. Where does the growth come from? Well, I've shaded in orange, 80% of all of the growth in Renfro County last year came in the form of residential construction. That's probably not really a surprise to anybody in the room, but there's confirmation at year-end of where the growth comes from. We had 20% of the growth is coming in the commercial areas. What's of interest to some is that we actually had negative growth in other categories, other including industrial and large industrials, certainly more categories, but primarily those two property classes. So, negative growth is instead of new additions, additions to existing industrial properties or brand-new industrial properties, we have actual changes in use, or demolitions, or physical changes to those properties. Graphically, same thing. The lion's share of all of the growth comes from residential properties. So, physical changes in use at the county level, if I take last year's county levy and increase it by 1.61%, I am experiencing a windfall on my municipal levy or my municipal budget by $602,250, 1.61% of last year's levy. So, that's dollars that are available to the county for municipal purposes because of growth. Growth doesn't happen the same right across Renfro County. So, here are your municipalities, and I've sorted in orange from the largest CVA growth in dollars happening in the town of Petawawa at $53,803,000, all the way down to Broodin, Alindock, and Raglin at the bottom. But everyone had positive growth, so a positive impact to your municipal budgets because of CVA growth in 2014. If I sort the list simply by the percentage change of the far column, it's actually Armpryor that winds up being the leader as far as CVA growth at 3.18%. Petawawa not far behind at 3, all the way down the list. What I've done in your slide deck, and I know they're, apologize again, they're very small numbers, but I've actually copied from Opta the growth information by tax class for each one of your municipalities. So, they're in your slide deck, they're available for you. Maybe after the meeting, once you get your magnifying glass handy, you can see what some of those numbers are. But certainly, your treasurer has access to all that same information and can bring that forward as well. As I mentioned earlier, there's two components of weighted CVA, which we need to do our municipal tax calculations. We talked about growth, now we talk about reassessment. So, assessments are based, as I mentioned, on current value, very similar to market value. Current value is an amount assigned to real property by an assessor from MPAC for property taxation purposes. The whole concept is CVA is established based on a willing buyer and seller, an arm's-length transaction in an open and competitive marketplace. So, this should be, we all have our own opinions about it, but the concept is that this should be somewhat representative of the real estate market conditions in each one of your municipalities. Valuation changes happen every time MPAC updates to a new and more recent point in time as far as reassessment goes. It does not create municipal revenue. Unlike CVA growth, where you've got new properties or additions added to your tax roll because you've actually physically got new properties being built, that adds to your bottom line. Reassessment doesn't do anything for your municipal bottom line. It simply is a reflection of market value from one point in time to another, from when one MPAC assessor looked at your property to another point in time. However, reassessment or valuation changes always create tax shifts, and those are tax shifts between properties in the same class, between classes, and because we're a two-tier municipality, between municipalities in a two-tier system, and I'll explain each one of those. So, here's really where this comes from. MPAC goes out and has a look at properties and establishes some sort of a market value currently once every four years. So, right now, we're working on a current value as of January the 1st, 2012. The time prior to that was January the 1st, 2018, and of course, the next time valuation comes around, it will be January the 1st of 2016. And in Ontario, we have something called, oh, I guess I'll go through this. Graphically, then, we talked about growth, which are the physical changes throughout the 2014 period, but valuation then is the real estate market change from January 108 to January 1, 2012. This is it. That four-year change in Renfro County came up with a 14.32% overall change in the market value of our properties from 2008 to 2012. The last reassessment prior to that, we had a 33.8% change in market value from one point in time to another point in time. Ontario was on a plan to actually have reassessment done each and every year, but it became so confusing for property owners to try and understand what they're being taxed on, that the province came in with some legislation that said, instead of on an annual basis, we're only going to do this every four years, but then we'll phase in the changes over that four-year period, making it very predictable for property owners to know what their property was worth today, and each of the next four years, you receive that assessment notice that tells you that this is the four-year plan of phase-in of that assessment that will take place. The only change to that is in year number one, if you are due a reassessment-related decrease, you'd get it right away. So, if your home was worth $300,000 and they reassessed it back to $250,000, that $50,000 reassessment decrease comes in year number one. So, we can't simply take this four-year plan and divide it up into four and say, yes, every year we're going, if it's 16%, we get a 4% increase every year. It doesn't work that way because all of the reassessment decreases happen in year one, and then we have three years to kind of phase in the balance after year number one. So, for 2015, the phased-in reassessment change will be 3.89%, just under 4%. So, again, it was 14.32 for a four-year period, but the phase-in for 2015 is coming in at 3.89%. So, we've got one more year of phase-in that we're going to go through on this cycle, and the expectation is that it's going to be very close to that same number for next year. I mentioned earlier that there are tax shifts that happen because of reassessment, and we'll look at each one of these in some detail, just to sort of explain the concept for you. But number one, tax shifts do happen between properties in the same tax class. So, if we took, for example, Laurentian Valley, and there's a number of residential properties, and the average, and this actually is County of Renfro data, by the way, that 4.14% is the phased-in reassessment change for residential properties across Renfro County. So, if, for example, we had one property that received their notice that said, your increase would be 7.5%, and when you do receive that notice, as a property owner, MPAC will tell you that your increase will be 7.5, and it always tells you what the average of the property class is right on that tax notice. If you're above the average, you will see an increase in your share of the tax burden simply because of reassessment. And I'll show you how that works. So, here we have Laurentian Valley, if you don't mind me using you as an example. They've got only residential properties in their tax base, and so, they've got $200 million worth of current value assessment. Here's all the residential properties, and they're changing by 4.1% on reassessment, but they got this one property that's going up by seven and a half percent in our example. Last year's levy was $500,000, and this year's levy is $500,000. So, Laurentian Valley decided they're not going to increase their budget whatsoever. But there will be a shift in the tax burden toward the property that's increasing higher than the average. And you'll see that this property's going up by seven and a half, so its value would now be $215,000 in the 2015 year. All the other properties only went up by 4.14, so instead of 200 million, they're 208, 280. So, we have a new denominator, we have a new current value assessment in Laurentian Valley, and you'll see that this property's tax went from $500 to $516, went up by 3% simply because there was a shift in the burden because of reassessment. And that's a very, very simplified example of how tax shifts take place within a property class because of reassessment. It doesn't generate any more dollars for you. It's the same, if you, as a municipal council, don't make the decision to increase your budget, and you hold the line on your total municipal budget, all you're doing then is shifting around who's paying for that budget, and reassessment causes that to happen. Example number two is really how does reassessment impact taxation between property classes? And these are the numbers for Renfro County in 2015. Residential's going up by 4.14, commercials only going up by 297, industrials only going up by .93 of 1%. The total, we looked at that slide already, that's 3.89%. So, how does that impact a shift in taxation? Well, you'll see, again, here are $1.35 billion worth of assessment. That's not very far off what our assessment is. Anyways, we'll get to that slide later on. Again, we've used $500,000 as the total municipal budget, and overall, it's going up by 3.89%. But each of the categories are going up differently. Four for residential, 297 commercial, and only .93 for industrial. So, you'll see that CVA has changed from $1,350,000 to $1,402,000, going up by the 3.89%. But we've decided we're not increasing the budget. Again, in Laurentian Valley, they're holding the line. So, because of that, you've got a tax shift that's happening between the classes. Because residential went up higher than the average, they are paying a slightly higher portion of the total tax burden. But likewise, commercial is paying less than they did before, and industrial is paying less than they did before because all you've done is shifted the tax burden between the classes. And how did you do that? Well, it was really just reassessment-related changes. And finally, in a two-tier system, so not all municipalities across Ontario are a two-tier municipality, but we are in Renfro County, so there is a shift between municipalities of the upper-tier burden of taxation because of reassessment. So, I've used three examples, and these are three actual municipalities, which we'll name later. But overall, 3.89% is the total reassessment change. So, there are the three municipalities. We have one that's increasing at 5.42%, that's our top municipality as far as reassessment change goes. We have an average municipality of 389, and we have the smallest change at 2.38%. Overall, 389, the same thing. If the County of Renfro holds the line on our municipal budget and does not increase it by a dollar, there still will be a shift in the tax burden between Renfro County municipalities in the proportion that you're paying the county levy. And that's simply because the denominator in our tax calculation, which is CVA, has changed differently for different municipalities. So, we've got a 1.47% increase in the burden for the top-changing municipality. The municipality that was right at the average doesn't change whatsoever. It keeps its same burden of county levy as it had in the prior year, and this municipality, who has a CVA change lower than the average, you're paying less of the county tax burden than you did last year simply because of reassessment. So, here are the named municipalities in Renfro County. Greater Matawaska is the winner at 5.42%.
I'm always in third place.
Armpryor is our lowest reassessment changed municipality at 2.38, and we have a municipality, Laurentian Hills, essentially right on the average. So, what's going to happen with these municipalities? Laurentian Hills will pay the same share of the tax burden as they did last year because they're right at the average. All of these municipalities down below, Headclare, Mariah, Broodinell, Horton, Petawawa, McNab, Renfro, and Armpryor will pay a smaller share of the county burden than they did in 2014. But the municipalities who are above the average, all the way up to Greater Matawaska, will pay a higher share of the county levy simply because of changes in reassessment. So, that's what reassessment does. It shifts the burdens around between properties, between classes, and between municipalities. It doesn't create one nickel of brand-new municipal tax revenue, it simply changes the shifting of the tax burden.
You're welcome, Bob. Can we ask a question?
Sure. Councilor Scott?
Thanks. I just wanted to, because you would assume that our overall assessment in Armpryor and Petawawa just on volume basis would be higher.
Excuse me, did you use?
So, is that the next? Oh, sorry. I'm just kind of thinking there's an asking here, but I said, Petawawa and Armpryor, you'd think because of growth and volume, the assessment would be higher. So, I'm wondering, is this, and I guess it's really an impact question, but is that the next of stock? Because maybe the older stock is getting sort of reassessed lower, because the new ones certainly aren't. Because it just kind of surprises me that the volume of new builds, that would actually change that way.
To cut us back, this is just based on the reassessment of existing properties and doesn't include new growth. So, I would take a look at the town of Armpryor and say that the valuation change would have been lower than other municipalities for this assessment here. So, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, I understand that. I just think a lot of our properties aren't that, like, there's been a pretty horrendous volume of new buildings, even in the last five years, which would have increased values versus maybe 100-year-old homes that are around.
I would look at Armpryor as having the biggest change in real valuation or growth in the last assessments within the 2008-2012 year. Thank you.
Jeff, please.
So, that really takes us to the, in our agenda, back to the nine decisions now that we have to make as a council around what to do with this information. So, that's the data. The data is the data. CVA growth, we've analyzed it, and we've kind of highlighted it by municipality. We've looked at reassessment, which is market value change, and we've looked at the impacts and shifts because of market value change. But now, we get to the decisions that council has an opportunity to make. And decisions can be no change, or they can be a change in a new direction. So, first of all, we have to look at tax ratios, and tax ratios are, simply put, the relationship of the residential class to all the business classes. And we use a factor, and that factor is what establishes that ratio between residential properties and business. So, back in history, in 1998, the province of Ontario established a brand-new property assessment and taxation system. Properties were divided into seven standard property classes by the province. In the first year, the province set tax ratios for these seven property classes, and in red, it says to ensure that the tax burden between the classes And in red, it says to ensure that the tax burden between the classes was the same in 1998 as it was in 1997. So the starting point was set by the province. We didn't have any impact or any influence on that starting ratio. The province simply laid that down for us. And here's essentially all of the ratios that they established in the year 1998, except for the red one, industrial. And that has changed here in Renfrew County and we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. The county of Renfrew at the time also chose to separate the industrial class into large and residual industrial. And there are, there are qualifying pieces of information that go into whether or not your property fits into the large industrial versus the industrial category. So tax ratios, what you as council have the opportunity to do is to lower them. You never have the opportunity to increase them. And again, it's the relationship between the property taxes paid on a residential property versus a business property. So you can reduce them, but you can't increase them. And we just talked about, if you change the ratio, you're changing the distribution of the burden of taxes. You're not creating any new money. There's no new revenue coming. It's just who pays what. And that's essentially all that ratios do. They change the burden of which properties pay which amount of tax. And the final point, it only relates to the municipal portion of the tax bill. As I mentioned earlier, the province sets education. You have no influence, no impact on education rates whatsoever. So we do something called a sensitivity analysis just to give you a sense or a quantum of what it would, what, what changing the ratios would influence the shifting of the tax burden. And so I've taken and decreased all of these, these tax ratios for the business classes by 5%. And if we did that in Renfrew County, we would have a shift in burden away from the business classes. But where does it go? Onto the residential class. Again, it's, we can't make the, the money go away or we can't make money appear. We're simply shifting the burdens around. So if you reduce it for a bunch of business classes, somebody else has to pay for it and that's the residential class. So it would be a shift of, in county notional tax dollars, of $340,000 away from the businesses and towards residential property owners. And that also takes place at each lower-tier municipality. So that's certainly one option that we have and that we discuss as a group of treasurers on this tax policy working group, is whether or not that's a decision that we would be recommending our heads of council to make and to create some new tax policy around that in shifting the burden toward the residential tax class. Item number two, we have to deal with something called a levy restriction. And a property class that exceeds a prescribed provincial threshold or average ratio can't get any municipal budgetary increase. And that's Ontario legislation. And we've got such a property class here in Renfrew County and it's our industrial property class. So the average or prescribed provincial ratio is 2.63 and we sit now in 2015 at 3.22. So we're above that ratio. So when they first enacted the legislation, they said, well, that's, so that tax class is now protected and no matter what your municipal budget is, you can't put any of it onto this class because they're paying too high a share of the total burden as it is. Something though happens whenever you restrict one class from getting any budgetary increase year over year, is that the ratio or the relationship between that class and residential keeps falling. Because every year I can't put, put municipal budget dollars onto that. So that relationship falls and falls and falls. And last year, we were restricted in passing budgetary increases onto the industrial group again. And because of that, that ratio decreased by almost half of 1%. And that's just a function of this provincial legislation, which protects property classes above the provincial threshold. And over, since 2001, that relationship has decreased by 19.6%. We're pretty close to 20%. And we haven't made a decision to, to reduce the ratio. We've simp, that's simply a mathematical calculation because of this levy restriction problem. If we did make the decision to say, look, let's bring the industrial class in Renfrew County right to the provincial threshold, the maximum, that's going to cost some money. And we all know it's not new money or just shifting the money around. So how does that work? We would reduce the burden to the industrial taxpayers by 18%, but all of the other taxpayers would see an increase of about a third of 1%. Or in county notional dollars, $113,000. So that's item number two. We, we have to deal with this levy restricted property class and we could reduce it all the way down to the provincial maximum. Item number three is, originally the province came in and they said, you know what, you can't pass any tax burden onto the industrial class. Then they changed their mind and said, that's not really fair. They will be, will allow you to let them pay up to 50% of what the budgetary increase is for all the other tax classes. So not zero, but 50%. So if you have a budgetary increase of 5%, this class can only get 2.5%. They're restricted still to 50% of the total. So the other thing that is, is unique about this levy restriction is it's not an upper-tier decision. It can be made independently by the upper tier and each lower tier. So if Laurentian Valley chose to, to say, yes, I want to put 50% of the burden onto my industrial ratepayers, but town of Armpryor said, no, I don't want to do it, you can make that decision independently. So that's kind of a unique feature of this. At the county level, we have consistently always brought a bylaw to these chambers saying that the principle of having the industrial class pay for some of the municipal budget pressures is reasonable. And so we've always used the 50% levy option with the industrial class. But that's a decision that each lower tier also has to make. And so that would, would factor into your tax rate calculations at the lower-tier level. There's a complicated process that I took your treasurers through and we have to calculate something called notional tax rates in order to understand what that 50% rule is. You don't really, I mean, certainly there, it's in the slide deck, but I'm not going to take the time this morning to go through it. But essentially, what notional tax rates do is they give you the benefit of CVA growth and then they calculate what is your municipal budget over and above CVA growth. Because CVA growth is new revenue for every municipality and this calculation allows you to take advantage of that. Item number four is something called revenue neutral ratios. Because the province every year is phasing in this reassessment, they're giving you the option of saying, well, let's pretend that didn't happen. Let's do some calculations to, to make the burden in 2015 exactly the same as it was in 2014. So even though IMPAC is reassessing all your properties, you can make it go away. Now, this one is an upper-tier tax decision that impacts everybody. So what it, what it means is that that shifting of taxation will not happen in 2015. And so again, a sensitivity analysis, so what happens if we go to revenue neutral rates in Renfrew County? You'll see that there would be a decrease in the tax burden for multi-res. But the commercial, industrial, and pipeline classes will see an increase in the tax burden. So in other words, they had a reassessment-related decrease in 2015 and you're taking that away from them if you go to revenue neutral rates, ratios. That's, that's all that this calculation does. So we need to make some decisions around whether that's appropriate or not. And as a principle, in the county of Renfrew, we've always decided that if a property is due a reassessment-related decrease, they should get it. We should never take that away from them. So in other, if we did that, your commercial property in Laurentian Valley that was expecting and looking at the IMPAC reassessment data, expecting to see, you know, a decrease in their property value and hoping for a decrease in their municipal tax burden, they wouldn't get it. In fact, they would offer that back up and it would be redistributed using revenue neutral ratios. So the principle that we've always held to is that, you know, if it's, if you're due that, you should get it regardless of the, of the property owner or the tax class that you find yourself in. But it's another decision that needs to be made and these recommendations will come forward to Finance Committee in the month of April. One other item that we talked about is that there has been some noise over the last little while about creating a new property class. And specifically, a new multi-res property class. And the concept is, should we create a new class, lower the tax burden to stimulate new multi-res construction? And some municipalities are looking very seriously at that and some have actually done it. And so we did some analysis with your treasurers on what the impact of that would be. So I don't have any concept of, you know, what the builders are thinking of out in Renfrew County and how many of them are thinking of building brand-new multi, multi-residential units. But, so we looked at it in total. And in total, across Renfrew County, we have $95 million worth of taxable multi-res properties and another $45 million of payment in lieu or government-owned, senior government-owned properties in the multi-residential class. So if we reduced that tax ratio from its current, I must have it here somewhere, 1.9346 tax ratio down to one, that's a shift in property taxation of about 47% or a million dollars away from multi-res and onto everybody else. That's assuming we made the choice and all multi-res went down to a, a ratio of one. So in other words, we currently see upper-tier and lower-tier taxation on the multi-res properties of about 2.3 million. We would put 1.1 million away by going to a ratio of one, 47% decrease for the multi-res properties and a 1.22% increase for everybody else. We identified a bunch of, again, principles around whether or not this was a, a direction that we wanted to go in in Renfrew County. And again, we reminded the group that it doesn't create new revenue. In fact, all it does is take the same municipal budgets and spread them around differently to other property taxes. Point number two really came through loud and clear with your treasurers is that if you give a break to brand-new multi-res properties, but next door, you've had a multi-res property that's been in your municipality and paying taxes for 25 years, who's going to be upset if they're paying higher taxes than their neighbor with the brand-new multi-res building? Item number three, we also talked about, if I'm a builder in Renfrew County and I'm going to create a new apartment complex, is my number-one decision, how much tax I'm going to pay on the property? Or is it, what's the market? What's the vacancy rate? Can I expect to fill the building? You know, what are my operating costs, et cetera, et cetera? And certainly, property taxation is, is an expense, but is it a sufficient stimulus in order to say, yes, I'm going to go ahead and, and build a new multi-res property? And finally, if you've got a builder who's ready to go ahead in 2015 anyways, and you change the ratio down to one, you've lost some tax revenue. Because they were originally going to pay it at 1.9346. So just some things that your treasurer's considered and I've listed those risks here for you. Years ago, certainly in 1998, this next decision that we had to make was very significant on all municipal budgets. And it's this tax capping situation. I'll try and get through it fairly quickly because the dollar impact on your municipal budgets is now as low as we've ever seen it since 1998 because of the decisions that county council has made. So what is capping? The general formula for property taxation in Ontario is CVA times the tax rate, there's your tax bill. Plain and simple. This formula can vary significantly for business properties in the province of Ontario because they're protected, commercial, industrial, and multi-res properties are protected from significant reassessment-related increases. Effectively, capping protects landowners for paying the full amount of taxes based on the assessed value as they are paying less tax than if we calculate it using the general formula. So essentially, what's happened in Ontario, when we came with the new Ontario Fair Assessment System and we had IMPAC go out and say, here's the current value of your property, here's the tax rate, Renfrew County, the impact wasn't significant because we were very much on current value assessment in 1998 anyways. Downtown Toronto, however, was still functioning on assessed values in the 1950 category. And so they hadn't updated their property tax rules. And so that change, and if you can imagine as a, as a commercial property owner in downtown Toronto, if your value of your property was set at the 1950 values, in 1998, somebody came along and said, no, no, this is your new value, that sticker shock was going to be enormous for you. And so there was enough of a buzz in Ontario to make the province change their mind on the fact that they've just implemented a new Ontario tax system. And essentially, what they did is they came along with a program which would cap the increases on an annual basis. In addition, so let's read this. On the other side, the IMPAC reassessed all properties in Ontario. Some properties actually had declines in value. Ordinarily, this decline would decrease their property tax burden. But Ontario also gave municipalities an option to use the capping program and clawback the reassessment-related decreases for some properties and use that to offset the reassessment-related increases to the neighboring property. So essentially, what is clawback? So if I have two restaurants side by side in Laurentian Value, Valley, and I've got one that's increasing in property value by 50% and one that's decreasing by 50%, we don't let the decreasing property get their savings and we help protect their neighbor, their competitor restaurant next door by offsetting their reassessment-related increases. That's one of the options that was available to us and still is available to us here in Renfrew County in this capping concept. Since capping was on the table in 1998, the county of Renfrew has always avoided this whole concept of clawback. And again, the principle we decided on early on was that if your property is due a reassessment-related decrease, you get that. We don't steal it from you and give it to your competitor next door. Or in a two-tier system, even worse, we steal the savings from a restaurant in Laurentian Valley and we help out a restaurant in Armpryor. And that's essentially what clawback does in a two-tier system. So we've avoided that totally. And I've left you some notes on the slide deck about the challenges that your treasurers thought they would have in explaining to this to an irate property owner when they came in to complain about their tax bill. And your treasurer had to tell them that, no, we couldn't give you the savings because we had to help out McDonald's in Armpryor. It's a tough sell. Okay. So we've avoided that whatsoever. A little bit of the history, originally called 1055, it was designed to be a three-year plan in 1998 and in 2015, it's still going on. We're not required to implement any of the options that are available to us for capping. If we choose, the default is simply a 5% cap based on last year's annualized tax. Here are all the options that are before us. When this was significant, at this session of county council, we used to go through the impacts of all of these decisions and all of these options. But I'm going to skip all of that pain for you this morning because the total cost of capping in Renfrew County in 2015 is estimated to only be $14,000. And that's split between the upper and the lower tier based on our proportionate share of municipal taxation, so roughly 50/50. So it's only going to cost the county of Renfrew about $7,000 and it's going to cost all of you lower tiers collectively about $7,000. But you can see that the first year we dealt with capping, we had a million-dollar problem. $500,000 to the county of Renfrew and $500,000 to all municipalities in order to deal with the cost of capping. To avoid clawback, once we made that decision that that wasn't right, that we stole from one to help somebody else out, we had to pay for that total capping cost on the municipal tax bill. And that was the decision that we made. And that was the decision that we made. Decision number seven is discount rates. Essentially, right now, commercial gets a, a discount rate of thirty percent and thirty-five percent for industrial vacant properties. We, that's the legislated, uh, guidepost, if you will. We could go to a blended rate, but we all know by now that as soon as we change that discounting to a blended rate, we have tax shifts that are taking place. It doesn't really save anybody any money in total, it just shifts the burden around between properties. We also have a bylaw to deal with tax relief for low-income seniors and the disabled. Our bylaw thirty-five-twelve establishes that reassessment-related increases can be deferred for property owners that qualify. Uh, however, that tax deferral pursuant to this bylaw is a lien upon the eligible property in accordance with the sections of the Act. So essentially, that option is available to property owners who qualify, but it becomes a registered lien and it's repaid with interest at the time the property is sold. We also have a tax rebate program for eligible charities. It's a forty percent rebate for those commercial and industrial property owners who are a registered charity. And, uh, the rebate is shared between the upper and lower tier and the school boards in the same proportion as we collect the tax. So if you qualify and apply for that, that tax rebate is there for you. There are some options where we could look at changing the current bylaw and, uh, we discussed those again as a group of treasurers and those recommendations will come forward next month as well. So that's it. That was, uh, decision number nine that we had to, to look at. If we assume that all the decisions are exactly the same as we made last year, what's the impact then, uh, on the weighted and discounted CVA for the County of Renfrew? And you'll see that when we go through all of those decisions, we've got eleven-point-one billion dollars of weighted CVA across Renfrew County. What's the bottom-line impact on the municipal tax rate? Because again, in the beginning, we said, all you do is you take your municipal budget and divide it by this total weighted discounted CVA, eleven-point-one billion, and now you're going to come up with a tax rate, not much more complicated than that. Here are the numbers for Renfrew County. In January, you passed a county budget at thirty-eight million, six ninety-seven. We have weighted discounted CVA of eleven-point-one billion. So we have a tax rate of point zero-zero-three-four-seven-eight-ninety-four. Or quite commonly, we multiply that by a hundred thousand dollars value and we say that for every hundred thousand dollars of CVA, the county, uh, taxes are three-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. It's a very common way of, of presenting the tax information. So in twenty-fourteen, taxes on a hundred-thousand-dollar property was three-fifty-four. They're now three-forty-seven. We've decreased them by seven dollars and ten cents or two percent. And how does that compare to prior years? Here's a graph that shows the County of Renfrew tax rate going all the way back to the year two thousand. You'll see that the three-forty-seven number is the lowest number on the chart. And in fact, it's, uh, the highest was way back in two thousand and five at four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and fifteen cents. And, uh, it, in the year two thousand, it was three-eighty-nine-eighteen. So the chart really looks like the County of Renfrew is doing a great job at lowering the tax rate, twenty-seven and a half percent lower than its high point in two thousand and five. And in fact, it's the lowest tax rate that we've had since the nineteen-nineties. But then I ask, is that good news or bad news or no news or what does that really mean? And I'm suggesting that anytime you look at tax rates, it's simply a misleading discussion about a meaningless benchmark because of reassessment. And once you factor reassessment into this decision-making process, tax rates don't mean a thing. And here's why. Here are the numbers in twenty-fifteen for the County of Renfrew. Our budget, thirty-eight million, six ninety-seven. There's our weighted discounted CVA of eleven-point-one billion dollars. And remember, last time MPAC reassessed was fourteen-point-three-two percent, but the time before, it was mid-thirty percent. So let's assume the MPAC comes around next time and says, ah, it's roughly twenty percent. So my weighted discounted CVA is going to go up to thirteen-point-three billion. And let's just say the county decides that we're going to increase our levy by ten percent. This new calculation creates a tax rate of three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars per hundred thousand versus three-forty-seven. I've just decreased the tax rate by eight-point-three-five percent at the same time that I've increased my county budget, five times more than the rate of inflation. And that's why tax rate discussions are really misleading. So what, what we, we did at budget time in January is we talked about what would be more, a more meaningful benchmark or a more meaningful comparison, which is really our county budget this year divided by our county budget last year. And let's give ourselves some, um, space or room for CVA growth because that directly impacts the bottom line for municipalities. So what were the numbers last year? Thirty-eight million over thirty-seven was three-point-four-five percent, but we had CVA growth of one-point-six-one. We looked at those slides already. So the net impact to County of Renfrew taxpayers who were here last year and they're here again this year is one-point-eight-four percent. That's the bottom-line impact for County of Renfrew taxpayers because of the decisions that were made in council chambers in the month of January. And let's look at it in history, that same concept over the last eight years. So from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, the budget we just adopted, the average annual net impact to County of Renfrew taxpayers was one-point-one-four percent after growth. So we're a large municipal organization with eight-hundred-plus staff and an awful lot of programs across a large geography and our net impact to the taxpayers of Renfrew County is just above one percent. This is a comparative chart, just looking at the same data for all Renfrew County municipalities from twenty-fourteen to twenty-thirteen. So that was the twenty-fourteen information where the net change was two-point-two-eight percent. And we had a couple of municipalities that were leading the charge lower than we were, the town of Renfrew at one-point-seven-six percent. And Bonneville Valley actually had a negative or a decrease, uh, in their net budget impact. And it looks to me very much like, uh, Bonneville Valley made a decision that regardless of what reassessment was going to be, all they wanted to do was raise the same levy dollars in twenty-fourteen as they did in thirteen. They froze it. And they let the tax rate calculation fall out after that. But that was the decision that their council made was to freeze the, the budget. So we've got about five municipalities that are in double-digit increases. We've got about five municipalities that are sort of seven to four percent. And we've got seven municipalities under four percent in twenty-fourteen. So this chart only has one municipality on it. That's the County of Renfrew in twenty-fifteen because I don't know what your decisions are around your budget tables as yet. So that's the counties at one-point-eight-four. And once you make your budget decisions and set your tax rates in your municipalities, that information then gets loaded into the online property tax analysis system and then we can populate this, uh, this type of chart. Two other issues that we talked about with your, your treasurers, one was railway right-of-way revenue. And this situation exists because of course CP Rail decided to pull all of their rail lines, uh, out of Renfrew County. And there was a significant impact, I'm going to suggest, because of, um, the valuation changes for railway right-of-way. We in Ontario have a, a system of collecting tax revenue from railway right-aways based on the number of acres, uh, that each one of those railways, uh, uses as they go through our municipal boundaries. And in two thousand and thirteen, we had eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-nine acres of railway. We had two small changes in Laurentian Valley and Whitewater, so fifteen-hundred-and-fifty acres in twenty-fourteen. And in twenty-fifteen, I've got seven acres. Seven acres left in Armpryor and that's the Ottawa Valley Railway. No CP, no CN left. Uh, the, the railway taxation dollars, of course, benefit not only the county but also lower-tier municipalities and the school boards. So in total, last year, we had three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars' worth of railway revenue that was received by Renfrew County municipalities. And because there has been a change now to the, uh, valuation by MPAC of those properties, in twenty-fifteen, assuming the same rates as last year, okay, that's the assumption in this, we're going to collect a whopping twenty-one thousand dollars in total across Renfrew County. That is decreases to the school boards of a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. The county loses fifty-five thousand in revenue and your municipalities lose collectively sixty-five thousand for a decrease of three-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars. The last item that I talked to your treasurers about was just being careful of or being aware of the, uh, amount of assessment at risk that is in Renfrew County. And in twenty-fifteen, there's four-hundred-and-forty-million dollars of assessed properties that are under appeal of some sort. And they are at risk when there is a reconsideration or ARP, ARB appeal that has been lodged and not yet resolved. So I've suggested to all of your treasurers to make sure that they analyze that list and understand the consequences of what those appeals could be on your local municipalities. And finally, um, we have set as a group of, uh, treasurers, uh, a deadline date, if you will, to have tax rates, tax rate bylaws adopted by council and tax rates entered into the online property tax analysis system. The one trick on that system in a two-tier municipality is no one municipality can move forward and use the system to generate business tax bills until all of the other municipalities are completed and entered into the system. So we're dependent on each other. So as a group of, of treasurers, we've set the target to be June the fifteenth of twenty-fifteen. So the impact for councils is that we, we are hoping that all the budget decisions and bylaws are finished by June the fifteenth. And that allows us to go then and use the tool to create the final business tax bills. And a lot of your treasurers are hoping to get some vacation time over the summer. So if we set June the fifteenth, they can get in there and get the bills going toward the end of June, maybe early July, and then it's, it's time for a little holiday time for your treasurers. Mr. Warden, that is the end of, of my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Counselor Gibson?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Do we have a breakdown of the four-hundred-million dollars at risk across the different property
We, we certainly could. And if I went back to my office and printed it, I, I can do that. But this, this tool is available to every treasurer for every municipality. And so this is really just one, uh, one tab within the opt-to-tool. And you can go in for your own municipalities. Essentially, if I click on that link, uh, right here at twenty-fifteen, I'll get the entire list of all Renfrew County properties. But when you log on, I'm logging on at, at the county level, I see it all. When your treasurer logs on, they see your properties at risk. And so they can certainly, it's role numbers and, uh, property owner name information, I think, is available. So that's very available too.
Thank you. Counselor Scott?
Thank you. Just to go back to when we were talking about the multi-res and, you know, the discussion around reducing it, uh, we found an armpryor last year and I don't know if you've had any intact in Pedoala. But it's, I think it's really directed more by the marketplace. We have, there are three developers that are, that probably do eighty percent of the developments in the town of Armpryor. And all three of them came back in the last year and changed their, their subdivision plans from single homes to duplexes and townhouses. So I think the market's driving that, uh, that multi-res thing without, and I don't think it really requires much encouragement outside of that.
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Yeah, just, uh, Jim, I'm not Jim, but, uh, Jeff, when we put all this together and we accept all of this and we take the county rate and the education, just so that I understand this, that creates a fifteen-dollar tax room situation for lower-tier municipalities between what was charged last year, uh, between the education rate and the county rate and going forward what it is this year, there's a fifteen-dollar tax room being created here by the County of Renfrew and the education rate.
Yeah, Mr. Warden, thanks for your question. I think Jeff's presentation indicated that as a result of reassessment of properties, and he used the example within Renfrew County, that even if you were to hold the line on the levy increases and your reassessment values increase, your denominator becomes greater, therefore reducing your tax rate. And he used the example there of the County of Renfrew where the tax rate has decreased substantially, but the decision to be made by council is the amount of levy dollars required for your municipality and it expressed that change, whether it be up and up or down, as a percentage of your previous year's municipal tax dollars. To, to say that you have new revenue as a result of reassessment, I, I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't say that. I would say that the increased revenue is a result of assessment growth within, within your municipality, creating additional revenue to use for your services that, uh, that you have at the county level as well as the lower tier. To say a reduction in the education tax rate that creates room, I would say, yes, it's not true.
So I think you're saying after all of that, the answer is yes?
Yes, you are.
If you take two-hundred-and-three and bring it down to two, to one-ninety-nine and you take the, the tax rate from the County of Renfrew last year to the County of Ten-Renfrew's tax rate this year, add it together, there's a fifteen-dollar savings.
Again, if you, if we take a look at the levy dollars required for campaign purposes this year, we increased by three-point-four-five percent. We included, uh, assessment growth at budget time, not as a result of the actuals, but one-point-four-five percent. So our overall levy dollars increased by two percent. But the reassessment of properties changed by four percent. So we actually had a tax rate reduction of two percent.
Yeah, I understand.
So you're not creating room as a result of a tax rate reduction. What you have to look at is the municipal dollars that are required by the municipality. And within the upper tier, we looked at a two percent increase for existing taxpayers over the previous year.
Boy, you're good. Boy, boy. I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate what I just said.
Yes, it is, yes.
Go still, yeah.
Counselor Luthy, please.
You just made that as clear as mud, Jim. I think you made it worse. I think the most important thing in all of this, and I think, Jeff, this was a great presentation. I know how much you love giving it. Um, there was some, I had a little nap, there was some drivel, but the most important thing in this is the levy. It's just like your own, your own municipality's budget. The difference is your levy. Forget about tax rates, forget about ratios, it's the amount of money that we're collecting from the taxpayer. Good? Done?
I understand.
Absolutely right. I thought that's what I said.
No, no. Even I didn't understand what you were saying.
Thank you. Counselor Scott?
We went through this to base in Armpryor this year big time because when I first got into this, there used to be a focus, people focused on the tax rate, the tax rate. Your levy comes from CVA and, and whatever your tax rate increase is and, and new development, right? So I look at it in terms of what's the cost to eight thousand people when I talk to them in Armpryor and I kind of take that rate. And we had a one-point-six percent tax rate increase. We had almost a six percent levy increase. We got all the new stuff that came online, building permits that went out, and that's the money you're spending and that's the money your residents are paying for. So from our perspective, and I was just an ordinary ratepayer out there, I look at that levy number for you.
Thank you. Counselor, is there any more?
Also, you, also, we have to take into account the fact of that shift, right? So my municipality's going to be paying more because of the shift. So my municipality's going to be paying more because of the shift than Patawawa. And he's been thinking, we exist, we sat down. So that also gives room to those municipalities then, because they are going to get less. The requirement to the county will be less than the requirement that I had last year will be more because of that factor, and theirs will be less. So there's all, in my opinion then, Jim, there would be more room for them also there then, right? Because they're going to be paying less to us here because of the shift, and that enables them to keep that money there. It's a simplified thing of what you're trying to say, but I'm trying to make it simple so that I can understand it.
Mr. Kuski, just again, using the sample of County of Renfrew of 2015, you have 2% increase in levy and the municipal dollars we required to run our programs in 2015 over 2014. That then 2% has to be spread amongst all municipalities. And as a result of their changes in assessment, whether they be reassessment or whether they be growth, the County of Renfrew was still requiring a 2% increase over last year, but it's going to be distributed differently based on the reassessment. So our tax rate is going to be applied to your property owner's tax bill as a result of their reassessment change. But as far as creating room at the local level as a result of all of that, I say it's not true.
Yeah. Mr. Hutton?
Counselor Duncan. I'm venturing into this very high finance discussion, but I think what Janice said would be true if all budgets stayed the same and didn't change.
That's right.
If everything stayed the same, so that would be true. Is that not correct, Jeff? All budgets stayed the same, then what you said would be true.
Okay, that's good. I'm happy with that.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Duncan.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Question with respect to the tax ratios. And I just want some clarification on the ratios between residential and commercial and industrial. This, the upper tier has set those ratios, except what I did here is that the lower municipality can set the industrial.
Yeah, I can take that question. With respect to setting tax policy, it is the decision of the upper tier to set the tax policies and to set the ratio of taxation, say, for commercial property as compared to residential. And we do have input from your local municipal finance staff in making those decisions and recommendations, first of all, finance administration, and then to county council. A question we did ask around the table was, are your economic development folks telling you that the taxation for commercial or industrial properties is too high? That really prohibits development within the various communities? The answer, we got back, was no. The main concern expressed by development was the price of electricity, not municipal taxation. With respect to your levy restriction on the industrial class, you have the opportunity both at the upper tier level and the lower tier level to distribute 50% of the budgetary increase to the restrictive class, being the industrial class in Renfrew County. So for us at the upper tier level, we had a budgetary increase of 2%. So as a result of the decision made in past years, and what they recommend to you, that 50% of that budgetary increase of 1%, we're going to apply that to the industrial class for 2015, but all other classes will have the increase of 2%. So it's just the levy restricted class of industrial in Renfrew County where you and the town of Deeper are able to make a decision of any budgetary increase to be applied to the industrial class or not for 2015, if you have a budgetary increase.
Supplementary, Counselor Duncan?
So I'm unclear whether finance and administration staff is recommending that there's any shift in the tax ratios between, I'll just, well, if there's any shifts between the ratio between residential and commercial.
The discussion around the table is we're recommending to finance and administration the same ratio of commercial, industrial, and so forth, their ratio being consistent with the previous year. So we're not recommending any decrease in the ratio or any movement to the, what do we call it, the revenue neutral ratio.
Counselor Dungy?
Thank you, Warden. My question, and again, now it's a percent increase in the levy, so I understand it fully. So if there was going to be, the caping on the industrial, is that based on the rate itself, i.e. if the county tax rate, just as an example, is going to go up 4%, then the industrial can only go up 2%? Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, and that was based on the Ontario New Fair Assessment System. When they looked at the reassessment of properties in 1997 for 1998 taxation year, they used the 1998 taxation year as a basis, how much came from the industrial class, how much came from the commercial class, how much came from multi-res and so forth. And they came up with these ratios to be applied for the 1998 taxation year. But in Renfrew County, when you took a look at the provincial threshold across the province and compared our ratio within Renfrew County for the industrial class, you're above the provincial threshold for all industrial properties across Ontario. And therefore, we're not allowing you to provide or to assess any additional budgetary increase to the industrial class than what you did in the previous year. So that's why within Renfrew County, the industrial class became a restrictive class. But then the rules changed, so the province allows municipal councils to apply a budgetary increase annually of 50% of the normal increase to the industrial class. And that's what we're going to be recommending for you, for the County of Renfrew for 2015, similar to 2014. And then each municipality will have to make that determination at the local level when they see what their dollar requirements are for 2015.
Counselor Dungy?
So this county is subject to that because we are above that provincial threshold. Has the county been advancing towards putting ourselves within the provincial threshold? The reason I'm asking this is because it's much like 40 degrees below zero is the same Fahrenheit and Celsius. And ultimately, if you're only increasing the industrial at 50%, sooner or later, they're going to meet residential and industrial are going to be identical. And there's probably even a calculation that could be done, how many years out before industrial are going to be paying residential rates.
That is absolutely correct, Ms. Warden, with members of council. Jeff's presentation indicated that that ratio for industrial has dropped by 19% since 1998. So as we restrict the levy increase, the ratio is coming down and will eventually, at some point in time, be similar to commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, your presentation. And I think one of the things that really disturbed me home here is the value of having the treasurers, municipal treasurers, come together in this group for the consultation to make a recommendation that seems to benefit all parties, as opposed to the county unit elaborating some decisions going in the long term. And the other piece would be, it also a value of that is that they have the responsibility of explaining to the councils as opposed to us individually. Mr. Kuski, you want to say something?
Yes, I just want to reiterate, I want to express the appreciation of every council that sends their municipal finance staff to our meeting to assist us with developing tax policies, and it's invaluable. And then also as well to explain it to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hutton, correspondence, before I forget it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking before. Thank you very much. The two pieces of correspondence, a thank you card from Gary Johnson family, thank you for the flowers and visitation during our time of grief. My father was a kind and gentle man, a support that would have brought us onto his place. Also, a thank you card from the Patawawa family. Thank you so much for your donation to the Sunsign Coach, remember our dad, who was able to visit our family cottage and switch it this past fall, thanks to the service of the family that built Patawawa. That's all I have for correspondence. Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I see it's now 10 to 12. We have lunch, about lunches out there, so we'll break until 12:35, and we'll resume the finance and admin. Thank you. Counselor Stack?
Thank you, Warden. I just have a brief announcement. First, I'd like to take a minute to introduce Justin Kingsbury, who's sitting in the back, who is a human resource student, and is going to be with our department here at the county for the next four months. So welcome aboard, Justin.
Thank you.
And Ms. Warden, I will defer to my colleague who will chair the meeting for me.
Counselor Love, then, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of county council, we hear finance and administration committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, number one, council remuneration. A copy of the treasurer's statement of remuneration and expenses paid to county council as of February 28, 2015 is attached for your information. Number two, the 2015 tax policy working group. We just had a presentation by Mr. Foss on that, so hopefully he's answered all your questions. Number three, the 2014 unaudited financial statements. These will be presented to the various standing committees of county council in April. Number four, privacy report. The County of Renfrew is obliged to submit a report on Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act request for 2014. And this is attached as the submission that was made by Mr. Beakley's office on behalf of the county. Number five is the Family Day, August 15, 2015. This includes the Warden's Family Day Duck Tank Challenge fundraiser for the United Way. The United Way is a charity that does excellent work across the county. And Mr. Beakley has assumed the job of coordinating this family event. So along with the Duck Tank Challenge, we are also having children's attractions like Little Ray's Reptiles, a rock climbing wall, a bouncy castle, and an enslaved maze. So anyone who would love to volunteer for this, please see Mr. Beakley. I'm sure they're looking for people to sit in the duck tank. And there's nothing like a politician than a great target for a duck tank. So let's raise some money for the United Way and hopefully support that cause very well. Next, we have bylaws. Number six, policies and procedures, human resources. These are clerical revisions to the human resources policies and procedures. There's a resolution with that, resolution number FA-CC-15-03-41, moved by the chair, seconded by committee. The county council approved the recommended changes to the following human resources corporate policies. A-01, A-07, A-08, A-11, A-14, B-11, C-01, E-01, F-01, G-02, G-03, G-04, G-05, and G-07. And further, that a bylaw to amend by law 63-03, being a bylaw to establish human resources corporate policies and procedures for the County of Renfrew be adopted at this session of county council, all of which is respectfully submitted by our chair, Walter Stack, myself, the warden, Lamont, Counselor Millers, Murphy, Robinson, Sweet, and Ms. Vizcques-More. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from council on item number one? Item two? Item three? Four? Item six? Counselor Dungy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just got, I went through all of these files, and the only thing I would like to recommend, I believe the first instance of it would be on page 30 of the report, really right into the actual policies, where there is reference made to homes for the aged. And that particular nomenclature appears several times throughout various policies. And I discussed, we interviewed Mr. Beakley, who I think also consulted, maybe with Ms. Sheeby and Mr. Rolke. My recommendation would be, in all instances, whatever the references to homes for the aged, it'd be substituted with long-term care homes. And that would be sort of consistent with the actual nature of these facilities. Plus, there was a great deal of discussion, I think, at both of the orientation sessions that council underwent through December, that this is a proper designation on these facilities.
Member of staff, I have any data on Mr. Beakley?
Sorry, Mr. Warden, members of council. So I agree with the change being recommended. What I would ask you, given that we've just captured these policies here, if we find that interplay of terms through the balance of policies, then permit us to change all of the corporate policies to reflect this direction. So if we have that as a direction, we can resolve it that way.
Certainly, we will provide that as direction to staff that the next few months it'll review all policies to tidy up some language to become more consistent. Thank you. Any other questions? Can I move, please?
I, I do, please.
Thank you. Discussion? Polls in favor? Polls, none, it's carried, thank you. And we have operations and Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, I too. I would like to defer to my vice chair for the report, because I wasn't prepared.
Thank you, Counselor Dungy. We have a, Counselor Dungy, I think, are you doing operations?
I am. Excuse me, I am, thank you, Mr. Chair. We are operations committee, which to report and recommend as follows. Item one is a tender quotation summary of various tenders, all found within the discretion of, either departmental discretion or within the discretion of the CAO. Winter operations, it's noted that certainly through February, there were significant winter operations, though it is less than it was even here before. I expect that all of the county councils in the room probably are experiencing the same discussion within their own municipalities in which control operations. Item number three is spring load restrictions. I suppose one of the silver linings that could be considered that is the spring load restrictions were held off to a somewhat later commencement date in 2015, and have been experienced before. I submit that's probably the only silver lining to the cold weather than that. Conversely, item four is a suggestion of one of the issues that must be dealt with because of the old winter area for flooding of Man Sue, which would certainly incorporate also various flows of culprits, I'm certain. Excuse me. Ultimately, item five is a bylaw for the tender of three tandem trucks and cloud units. Council has advised that nine tenders were received. Of them, you will note that there's an asterisk beside three of these tenders. And those were specifically highlighted because there were qualification statements made in the tender documents that ultimately rendered them outside of consideration. And ultimately, the tender provided by Valley Truck and Spring Services in Pepper, Ontario, was deemed to be the winning tender. So I have resolution number OP-CC-15-03-27, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that the tenders submitted by Valley Truck and Spring Service, Pepper, Ontario, for the supply and delivery of three tandem trucks and bowies with gin core equipment in the amount of $743,226 plus taxes, which would be $756,612.06, including net taxes. Excuse me, with additional funding directed from the equipment reserve beyond the 2015 budget, which is in the amount of $51,612.06, be approved. And then a bylaw to authorize execution of contract, PWO-2015-04, be approved, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself, Michael Donohue, vice chair, and committee members, Chair Jennifer Murphy, Counselor Peter Emo, Warden Peter Emo, Counselor Ben Farr, Counselor Gary Gruntz, Counselor Robert Kingsbury, and Counselor Tom Eckert.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council on item one? Item two? Three? Comments, questions, concerns from members of Council on Item One, Item Two, Three, Four, Five, the report as a whole? Can I move it, please? So moved by Councilor Murphy, or Councilor Dungy? Discussion? Polls in favor? Opposed? None, it's carried, thank you. And Councilor Sweet, Development Property, please.
Yeah, and keeping with what's happened in the last kind of while, I'd like to defer to Councilor Ken.
This is after the new remuneration, by the way.
Good point. And Councilor, Councilor Ken, please.
Thank you, Warden. We, Department of Development, wish to report and recommend the following. For information, number one, timing addition activity tractor, table for council's information is the activity tractor for February two thousand and fifteen. Number two, Ontario Provincial Police Facility, four feet to Brian Road, project update, table for council's information is project summary as of March of two thousand and fifteen. Number three, maybe the leader radars restructuring team, the CML restructuring process is entering into final stages, and there is a meeting on Tuesday, March the twenty-fourth of the meeting. Number four, events and conferences, A, Active Transportation Summit, County of Redford, there is a summit to be held on May the twenty-eighth, and May the twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, additional details will be provided as of coming available. Committee number, the Community Economic Development, one oh one, a seminar is scheduled on Thursday, April the second, two thousand and fifteen, from nine AM to twelve noon at the Best Western. Number five, two thousand and fifteen Ottawa Valley Road Program, one hundred thousand of Ottawa Valley Road mass, that we just created, and they're on your desk. Thank you. Number six, the OMTA Annual General Meeting, save the date, it's on Tuesday, April the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. Number seven, Celebrating Living in Business Workshop, the workshop takes place on Tuesday, March the thirty-first, from eight-thirty to two-thirty PM at the Best Western here in Pembroke. Number eight, Forest Ontario, connecting our forests, there will be a video show at the end of this report, which is quite good, I had occasion to look at it, and it was very good. Number nine, forestry activities, table for council's information is a document prepared by County Forester and type reporters of sustainable forest management in Oglewood Park. Also tabled for Council's information is a letter received by Warden Eamon from Mr. Eddie Hydenley, President of Alberta Hydenley and Sons Limited, expressing appreciation of the county's support of the forestry industry in Redford County. Number ten, land use planning, please, there's a twelve thousand dollar fee that's being levied, but the fee does not apply to the municipal level, because the Redford County is the authority, and they're looking to have their official planning completed within the plant claims, so that hopefully they can become exact on the twelve thousand dollar fee. Number eleven, applying human rights lens in zoning, licensing, and municipal decision-making, the Chief Commissioner is challenging all municipalities to review the planning by laws and decision-making processes to improve the human rights in housing planning, licensing, and other municipal decisions. Number twelve, land division orientation session, there was a meeting held on March the fourth, where Councilor Kingsbury was elected Chair, and the committee is made up with Councilor Farr and a lot of the ultimate, as Councilor Murphy. Resolutions, number thirteen, the Oglewood College co-op student available for economic development and services, table is a business case, outline the financial impact of this issue of co-op placement, that will have an impact on economic development decision, and also provides a background on how will the system deliver a county's annual special projects mission. The total cost is six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, but the county's portion is three thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Resolution Number DPCC-15-03-15, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the County Council approved the hiring of the Oglewood College co-op student from June fifteenth to August fifteenth, to be funded from the Economic Development Division's Special Project Budget Line at a cost of three thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Bylaws, the Ontario Highlands Tourist Organization funding CPR, Community Civic Railway, table is a bylaw and tourism partnership agreement between the Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization and the County of Redford with regards to partnership funding provided by the Ministry of Culture and Cultural Affairs. Resolution Number DPCC-15-03-18, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the County Council passed a bylaw authorizing the Warden and Chief Administration Officer clerk to sign the agreement that the Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization for funding the revenue and summary of the environmental reports supplied by the CPR, all of which is respectfully submitted by Glenn McKay, Vice Chair, and Committee Members, Councilor Sweet, Councilor Doncaster, Warden Eamon, Councilor Gibson, Councilor Miller, and Councilor Eckert. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from members of Council on Item Number One, Item Two, Item Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Vazquez-Moore?
Thank you, it's on Item Eight. Before we get to see our presentation, the video, I have in front of me two tongue depressors. They were given to me by my physician, Dr. TJ, and my husband's physician, Dr. Sobolski. These tongue depressors are wood that comes from Redford County, it's birch, and it goes to China, and they're both, they buy their tongue depressors from China, and they both have asked me to bring to County Council, and to present to you, Mr. Sweet, as Chair. That's you, Mr. Warden.
She's contagious.
They have asked if the Committee, the DNP Committee would, that they could look at innovative ways in which we can use the birch that's produced in Redford County, instead of sending it to China to make tongue depressors, if we could do it here in Redford County. I have delivered my message, and I do, I did tell both doctors that I do sit on the Wood Processing Committee for the County of Redford, and that I would bring those tongue depressors for you and the Chair, to bring to the Committee, to see if there's something we can do, so that we produce jobs here with the material, that natural resource that we're so blessed with in Redford County, instead of sending it to a country and then having them return it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, and I think what we'll do is just put it on the agenda for a general discussion, and see if there's something we can hush together, is that?
Thank you very much.
Chair, Sweet?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item Number Nine, Councilor Dungy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I'll probably have to direct this question to Mr. Moro through you. There's a sentence in this report that is saying that the suggestion that the unutilized capacity, excuse me, the other, I'm guessing, for Southeast Ontario forests could compensate for timber currently harvested in Oglewood Park, and my question is, is that suggestion, is that perhaps the impetus behind the movement to ending forestry in Oglewood Park, that it would simply, that resource could be compensated for from some other resource, which I find to be appalling, if it is behind it, because if it's not addressing a concern with the logging itself so much as it could be by receiving from some other side?
Thank you, Councilor McPerritt, and Mr. Moore, please?
Thank you, Warden, through you to Councilor Dungy. It's a good question, and when Lacy met with the Environmental Commissioner on February twenty-fifth, that was one of the key points she pushed back on, was that in terms of volumes of wood and species mix available outside of the park, that is not the case, and that is a misnomer, it's not factually correct, and I think she did a very good job in the attachment that is attached, that that's not the case. Whether or not the Environmental Commissioner accepted that or not, you know, she said that, in her opinion, it fell on deaf ears, but I'll leave it at that, in fact, I heard this week, Mr. Miller has decided to retire at the end of April, so we'll have the new Environmental Commissioner.
Thank you, I think even a stronger point could be made politically, that is more a, it speaks more to the vision of engineering centrally, in terms of, here is a quantity that should fulfill the needs, but it doesn't speak to good economic planning in terms of spreading the economic activity around Ontario, and so, you know, I think that's a stronger political message. Lindsay, sorry, Lacy's job was to factually refute the portions of the other report we didn't like, our job is to retail that, and then also add some proactive comments about the detrimental effect of such a policy. So feel free to speak on it if you need an opportunity, but it might be the best policy for the forestry industry in Ontario.
Item Number Ten, I believe, we're at, or I'm just out of Ten? More?
I said more, I was deep, but he turned off my mic. Thank you, Warden, through you to County Council. Just one point of clarification on that, the table that is attached has been produced and prepared by the Province of Ontario, so the one clarifying point I wanted to make is, that twelve thousand dollar fee that you see there, that is not something that we're levying at the county level, that is something that is being foisted upon us at the provincial level from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. In our conversation with the Province of Ontario on that, they have indicated to us that it is an incentive for the County of Redford to move along with the process, to have their county official plan updated and brought into compliance with the new PPS. When we do that, they will renew our exemption authority, and these fees will not apply to the lower tier, so a bit of a carrot and stick for us on that one. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Item Number Eleven, Item Twelve, Thirteen, Item Fourteen, word for the whole? A mover, please? So moved by Councilor McKay, discussion? Polls in favor? Opposed? None, it's carried, thank you. And we'll move to the Health Committee with Councilor Vazquez-Moore. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to do the video first, pollers.
I can't really think of the time when I had the epiphany that I decided I wanted to be in the forestry. I think it was just something I grew up, I really enjoyed. My family's been in the forestry for quite a while now, the fifth generation in my family. We first started in about the mid-eighteen nineties, and you look at that forest management in Oglewood Park, and contrasting the early days of forestry in Oglewood Park till now, I think one of the key differences that you can look at is the overarching view of sustainability. A long time ago, they were just concerned about cutting the trees and getting rid of the forest, but over the years, we've slowly evolved into this system where we know that the forest is limited, and we have to ensure that it's available and sustainable for the next generation. There's always been a disconnect between urban and rural populations.
As a society, we become less and less of farmers and more and more of city dwellers, it's always a challenge to get that connected, and that's what this, you know, this program that these students are taking in, and Forest Connect's got a better title.
We've got urban kids, and for them, it's a big difference to be out here in the environment and actually see what it's like, as opposed to being in the city.
So I think one of the interesting things I've noticed from the high school groups come, such as Forestry Connects, is that they really almost had a life walk in their heads when they realized that, wow, this tree that got cut down in the forest has been replaced by a number of growing trees, and that tree then is situated in sawmill where it's processed, and I don't think there are a variety of other products that end up in your home business, and I think it's really interesting for them to realize that, well, these products, made of wood in my house, did actually come from forests here in Ontario.
Every time they're presenting in terms of forestry, what's going on, and what we're actually seeing, they're just soaking it up, and they're excited about it, you get back on the bus, and they're talking about it.
Serene, beautiful, mysterious, necessary, diverse, simplistic, peaceful, awesome.
It's different when you see it, you know, I talk about it, or someone tells you about it, or you watch it on YouTube, it's not the same as when you're actually there.
Basically, what I'm doing is putting paint on trees that are to be selected for harvest.
They're definitely renewable resources. Definitely.
They have a twenty-five-year plan set out, and they set out for like over a hundred years, so I was really impressed, we're like, our forests, and like the government is working together to try to make a whole plan to make sure our arid farming is sustainable.
I thought it was interesting to see like all the different products that come from wood.
Does anyone drink coffee here with low-fat coffee made? When you remove the fat, you remove that, the creamy gelatinous nature of the product, and you see cellulose on the label, that's from the wood welding industry, and it did come from some trees, probably somewhere in Canada.
I think a lot of people find that pretty surprising, that in their daily lives, they're having a constant interaction with different wood products.
On that note, let's go look around, and I'll show you what happens when we break wood to the mill.
I've been really surprised over just the amount of stuff I didn't know about forestry, and how much time and drugs they offer, and how much there is in forests that we don't think of them.
I think the career in natural resources would be phenomenal, I love the wood by my heart to council at school, I love that stuff.
It's amazing watching them, you know, live in the city, step off the bus in the trees for the first time, it's been amazing, they're so much more relaxed, they're just sort of in awe.
Everything's connected, it's all one big life cycle circle, we take care of the forest, and it'll take care of us.
Thank you, I've had opportunity to meet Mr. McCray on several occasions at Quahog Fire Association meetings, and also appeared with him in front of Mr. Moro, he's quite passionate and knowledgeable about the forestry, and is someone that we continue to partner with and listen to as we develop our position. Councilor Dungy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I thought that was very, very well through his video, and the takeaway, to me, what was maybe one of the most important comments in the whole video, from the Redford County, that's so resource-based, is there is so much stuff I didn't know, and so much pushback on so many of the resource industries is predicated upon a whole lot of information that people don't know, which simply, I think, also reinforces how important and necessary it is for this type of effort, which is trying to get to people, and it has not just schoolchildren, all of the population that is not exposed to the resource industries need to know these things, so this is an imperative going forward, an educational component to this is a concept.
Thank you. Nothing further on the video, we'll move to the Health Committee and Councilor Vazquez-Moore, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I will not defer, I will, may I be before, members of County Council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows, information, Item Number One is resident population, number two is the provincial budget, the funding for long-term care and bonus, the Chair was in Pembroke, and the Warden sent the message many points under mark there, well done, Mr. Warden, on sending our message back. Number three, your electrical bill, good news story, we're getting some money back on the electrical bill. Number four, Volta Manor, they had the staff chili cook-off, raised some funds for the Redford Food Bank, congratulations. Number five, the foundation is hosting the senior, they hosted a senior talent showcase, and again, I heard it was a great success, so congratulations to the foundation. Number six, the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen one-time funding for the Adult Aid Program. Number seven is the Wesley United Church of Canada Emergency Services, they had a service that will be held on April twenty-sixth. Number eight, the Declaration for Bravery, and I want to congratulate Mr. Brad Smith, the game, he was in these chambers, and County Council back showed him how proud we were of him. Number nine, Active Transportation Summit. Number ten is the CBRE training, the paramedics that have identified an interest or an emergency plan will take part. Resolutions, number eleven, Resolution Number HTC- Resolutions, number 11, Resolution number HCC 15032, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council authorized the Warden and the CAO clerk to sign the QIP for each of the lodge and manor and staff to submit the QIPs to Health Quality Ontario by the deadline of April 1st, 2015. Number 12 was the Brentford Fire Department inspection of the manor. Because of that, Resolution number HCC 150323, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approves the utilization of up to a maximum of $30,000 from the Volture Manor unallocated reserves for the purpose of the required door closures at the manor to comply with the inspection orders. Bylaw, Resolution number HCC 150324, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approved and adopt by bylaw, authorizing the Warden and the CAO clerk to sign the amended multi-sector accountability agreement effective April 1st, 2015, including the financial service activity and performance expectations for 2015-16 between the LIM, Lemburk, and the County of Brentford Volture Manor Senior Adult Day Programme for the continuation of 100% funding for the multi-year agreement, April 1st, 2014 to March 31st, 2017. Number 14, Resolution number HCC 150326, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve and adopt of bylaw at this session of the County Council, authorizing the Warden and CAO clerk to sign amending agreement number one, amending the August 1st, 2014 funding agreement between the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care and the County of Brentford for the expansion of community paramedicine in the County of Brentford, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself, as Chair, Committee members, Don Castor, Donahue, Eamon, Kingsbury, Love, and Ryan Wall.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from members of Council? Item one, item two. Councillor Robinson?
I'm just wondering what the capacity of the manor and lodge are. I'm looking at the competition, I guess just trying to understand what you really mean.
Mr. Warden?
Volture Manor's 180, and the lodge is 166. Am I right? Odd ending this job.
Item number two. Item three. Item four. Item five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. And item, the record is all. A mover please?
A slow move, Mr. Warden.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. And we'll move to Social Services, and Councillor Robinson, please.
To yourself, the committee wishes to report and recommend as follows. Item number one, Ontario Works' capable statistics. People know what there are done because of the difficulties with SAM. And sort of, I was a realistic Ottawa citizen last week. The ministry was being taken task in by the Social Services Department in Ottawa, and there were a number of comments made. I'm just going to ask Mr. Anderson, just to bring us up to speed on how the difficulty with software is affecting not only our staff, but their clientele as well.
Do you, or Warden? Yes. To County Council, thank you. With respect to the social systems management software that is being implemented by the province of Ontario, certainly has caused angst amongst our clients, amongst our staff, and here at the County of Brentford. We continue to work with the province of Ontario to implement this software system. We've been at it now, I think, for almost three months for full implementation. We receive an update every morning before 9:00 on the software fixes that are going forward. The transition has not been smooth. That would be an understatement. There's been a number of social services agencies take shots at the province of Ontario, simply for the methodology they've used to implement it. I think our observations are very simple. Where the challenges occurred was on the conversion of data. When you move from one old system to a new system, and you don't fully test it, and you implement it, implement the system before it's tested, it creates problems. What we have done at the staff level is that our focus has certainly been on our clients. We're fortunate to be small enough to provide individual attention to our clients to make sure that there's no hardships as we go along. Having said that, though, the amount of energy and effort from our staff has been considerable to make the transition. Has the province been helpful? Well, certainly the province has flowed to us some funding to assist in the transition and to absorb our extra costs, so we received two allocations of $61,900 each, which we have certainly put towards staff time to make this program work and to serve our clients. I'm under no false illusion that tomorrow I'm going to get up and this system's going to be fixed. However, I think as the province has indicated to us, and I'll indicate to you, they're in it for the long haul, and they're going to make it work. The province has now brought in a third party to look at how the implementation occurred, and are there other areas that they should be looking at? And of course, this makes me a little bit concerned because I'm working with the province on other software, new software upgrades. So we've certainly indicated to them, if you can learn from what we've experienced on the social services side of Ontario Works, can we be very, very, very sure that you spend enough time on data conversion before you implement new software? So to sum up, Mr. Warden, without prolonging my explanation here, our focus continues to be on our clients. I want to acknowledge our staff and the patience our own committee has as we move forward with making this system, bringing it online, making it live, and hopefully down the road have a system that's going to function better than it does today.
Thank you. Chair Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And again, I'll give your staff our appreciation. The fact that we don't hear a lot of complaints from the clientele is an indication of how well the staff is working. Item number two, childcare statistics, 2014 and 15 childcare fee subsidy statistics comparison. I am actually going to ask Mr. Anderson again just to comment on the waitlist total, just to, so he can put it into perspective of what 293 really means.
Certainly, if I could again, Mr. Warden, through you to County Council. Just to, just to put everything into perspective, we have both the business side and the social side to childcare. In 2005, our budget for childcare, along with our partner, the province of Ontario, was $1.5 million. The budget that you just passed in 215 was $7 million. So that gives you a sense of the emphasis that the provincial government has put on childcare. We always have waitlists in childcare. Either, it's not that we don't have lack of fee subsidy funding. We deal specifically with the parent or the caregiver or the childcare agency. You may recall that when we did our orientation session, we talked about Bill 10. Bill 10 was passed in 2014 as the new Childcare Modernization Act. And you're going to see childcare change as we continue to go forward. You may or may not recall that there's been a lot of incidents of bad childcare, and I don't want to stereotype this in private daycares that aren't licensed. The province is certainly going to zero in on unlicensed daycares, and they're going to make that part of a licensing system, I think, as they go forward. I say "I think" because although the legislation is passed, in our business, no different than your business, at the local level, the devil is always in the detail, and that comes with the directives and the regulation. So with respect to the waitlist, we always have waitlists. We have various children, various parents with different needs. However, I want to reemphasize to you that the direction that we got from this chamber many years ago is that children are very important, and they need to be our focus. And I think, I think we did a pretty good job in meeting the needs of parents and children as well as daycares here in the County of Ontario.
Thank you. Chair Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We also have the 214 to 15 integration coordinator statistics comparison. Again, I'm just reminding people that this reflects the number of children with some sort of special need who require support in daycare centers, and this support is actually crucial. It enables them to get a leg up and hopefully enter the school system and be supported there as well. Number three is the Brentford County Social Housing Registry waitlist statistics. Number four is the SAMs. I think you've put that one down there. Number five is the waiting list for social housing, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself, Warden Meehl, Carr, Gibson, Grant, McKay, Ryan Wall, the staff.
Thank you. Comments, questions, or concerns from members of Council? Item one, Councillor Donohue?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm kind of curious if Mr. Anderson might have some idea when he might, what day he might wake up and this might be fixed. And corollary to that is, in the report, it mentions the province is addressing the high impact, I think, issues. First, I'm left wondering how many total issues are there? And I guess, thirdly, in response to Mr. Anderson's suggestion that there is further software upgrades in other areas that are being contemplated. And I've yet, certainly the province has moved to address the issues that are with SAMs, but I've never yet heard any sort of mea culpa from the province of how incredibly badly this has been implemented. So I'm wondering if there has been any indication that there has been some pleasant hurt.
Mr. Anderson, please.
Through you, Warden, and to members of the County Council. The question is, when is the light at the end of the tunnel? Now, the program is getting better, but it's not perfect yet. With respect to caseload statistics, here in the County of Brentford, I will have statistics for you in April to give you a sense on how it's impacting our business. With respect to software, I think, as echoed by the councillor, SAMs is not perfect. It's far from perfect. Certainly, we deal with numerous software programs with the province of Ontario. You've heard me say this numerous times to you. We are the stats Canada for the province of Ontario. When it comes to items on childcare, every Friday afternoon, we send them our statistics. Does that software system work? Yes, it does. I also participate in a program in social housing. This is the, this is the program that they're going to change software on. They're going from a program called AMES, which means nothing to you, but for us, we report on all provincial federal programs to the province of Ontario, and they're going to a grants Ontario software program. We have been sitting around the table with the province of Ontario, emphasizing to them that you had better spend time on data conversion. Don't expect software to take something from A, run it through B, and then come C is the new data. It just does not work that way. Many of you around the table know that new software is often marketed as the latest and the greatest, but when you get down to the conversion, it doesn't quite work the way it's supposed to. So I think they have that message. I would hope they have that message. With respect to the province, there's no doubt, you know, from the ministerial level down, we have, their social services department is 47 of them across the province of Ontario that have certainly been providing comments to the province. We belong to numerous associations, AMO, OMSA, that have all taken up the charge on this software conversion. And I think it's, suffice to say, your observations are correct. It has not worked. The province has made a commitment that it will work, and that they will, they will compensate you for your costs. You know, the devil will be down the road whether or not they meet that commitment. I think, as articulated by the Chair, last week, the province took another $5 million at this program to get it to work, to work with service managers to make sure that their costs are covered, overtime costs and that. That we can't fault them on, simply because they're sitting down with us now, and they're saying, what do you need to make this work? I think if you were to go back and take a look at how things progressed, they probably should have spent more time doing that initially before they implemented the system, along with the data conversion. But again, the horse is already out of the gate, so we're doing our very best effort to try and make it work.
Thank you. Councillor Sweet, and then Councillor Irving.
Yeah, I think David kind of touched on it a little bit, but I maybe I'll just go over it. Maybe you could reiterate it for me, David. This is coming up on the AMO warrant this coming weekend, and one of the challenges there is, of course, the cost that you talked about, and are we being compensated for that? And how much is it actually costing? It would be nice to know that. There's some suggestion there that it'd be folded into the 50-50 administration costs, which was part of the fiscal review, as you recall, which is certainly going to be a cost to us of any additional 50-50 split situation. What is the cost roughly? I mean, give some sort of sense of what it's costing as a result of trying to implement a program that was put in place by the province. That would be helpful when I go forward to the board.
So if I could, Warden, just through you to County Council. Our costs here in the County of Brentford to date is take $61,900 and times by 2. So that's the amount of money that the province has allocated to us, and 100% dollars. So no 50-50 costs on our part. Chair, or Councillor Sweet, they're picking up those costs. So to date, we've asked for that money. We've identified what our costs are. They come back to us with the money, 100% provincial.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, Councillor Irving?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. David, just, you just answered my question. I wasn't sure if they were giving you 61,000 times 2 and hoping that it was enough money or if that's, if that was really the base of our needs. It is very troubling to me that you are basically beta-testing software, that you have no business beta-testing. And that being said, why don't they just revert you to the old system while they figure out the bugs? This is not an update from Apple for my iPhone. This is very serious. I don't understand why they would roll you back and say, give us a few months, we'll figure it out, and then we'll bring you this new software.
Mr. Anderson?
If I could, again, Warden, to members of County Council, it all gets down to licensing. It's a whole system license, new system license, and, you know, it's the business model that they have adopted. And I, I can't argue with you because I'd lose the argument, but to use the province's words, not mine, they've moved on.
Well, good for them.
Councillor Gibson?
A question for Mr. Anderson.
Please, one?
It's matters new and indicated that the province has other software in the works. At one time, the city of Peterborough was a test-case city for anybody who wanted to market a new product. So if a candy manufacturer came out with a chocolate bar, they tried it out in Peterborough for six months before they wanted to be further with it. And I would suggest for 47 locations across the province, the province may have been wiser to test case one place for a year. And perhaps I could offer the suggestion that next time you're talking to the province, ask them to do exactly the same thing. Get one location, test it for a number of months, and make sure that it works before you roll it out. And make sure that you have that provision in your licensing agreements, that it will be tested for a period of time before it is ever rolled out of the province wide. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number two. Item three. Four. Item five. Record is all. A mover please?
Hello.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. And bylaws, please? Shay, bylaws, I think they would be on Mayor Justanski Moore's desk, right on top. I think I see them. If you lean over the back of the chair.
And then you'll purl yourself. I'm not touching anything she touched.
Harge Burns?
Just for what she said.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Ryan Wall, that the bylaw is listed on item 11, attached here too, as Schedule A, on the County Council agenda dated March 25th, 2015, being read three times and passed.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. Number 12, notice of motions. You'll note that Councillor Gibson has submitted the attached notice of motion dated March 10, 2015, with regards to the opening prayer. Mr. Hart? Mister Hudson, do you have anything to add to that in terms of process?
Thank you, mister Warden. In terms of process, this will be on the agenda the next month. The motion that is brought forward would be considered a motion to rescind and will be subject to debate with the entire council. It requires a mover and a secuder, of course, to be debated. A mover can come forward, a secuder to be debated. And no other information at this point. Warden, you move.
Thank you. Item number 13. Item 14. With that, we have a closed session. A mover and a secuder to discuss personal matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal or local board employees. And the second item is litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunal affecting the municipality or local board. A mover, please? Councillor Love and seconded by councillor Doncaster. You've heard the motion, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. We are now closed.
Three turns in the power. On to number 27-15.
You've heard the motion, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. And a motion to adjourn, please? Councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Brunt. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you. I'd like to compliment councillor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.